Good morning, everyone. I'll wait a few more moments for everyone to get fully connected here. All right, I'll first start by looking to the court reporter. Are you ready for us to go on the record this morning?
Hi, good morning. Yes, I'm ready.
Thank you. Welcome back, Ms. Cott.
Thank you.
Ms. Willie, I see you have a hand up before we get started here. Would you like to jump in?
Sorry, still off the record?
No, this would be on the record.
Okay, one moment.
So if you want to start the proceeding, then I can ask.
Okay, and then we'll go there. Great. I'll go ahead and get started with my usual introductions and then we'll warm up and then we'll go from there. Good morning, everyone. It is October 2nd. We are in a new month. And I am Nicole Kinsey, Presiding Hearing Officer for the Administrative Hearings Office of the State Water Resources Control Board. This is the hearing on the pending petition for assignment of state filed application 25517 and accompanying water right application 25517 X 01 and the pending request for release from priority of state filed applications 25513, 25514, the unassigned portion of 25517, 22235, 23780, and 23781 in favor of water right application 25517 X 01 of Sites Project Authority. The hearing today is being conducted by Zoom on the Zoom platform. The hearing is also being broadcast live on the AHO YouTube channel. Both the audio and video of the hearing are being recorded and we will post files of this recording in the FTP folder for this proceeding. The YouTube recording will also be available on the AHO YouTube webpage. As usual, if at any time you're experiencing technical difficulties trying to communicate with us or accessing the Zoom platform, please send an email to the sites email inbox at sites-wr-application@waterboards.ca.gov. As is usual, we will take breaks, we will have lunch, and we'll have a hard stop at 5:00 PM. Ms. Mullen is once again assisting us today, so please feel free attorneys and witnesses to address her directly as needed to assist. I also want to acknowledge that I believe we have board member Firestone joining us on the Zoom platform today as well. I am going to, as usual, carry over appearances from our other proceedings. And where we left off, and I will turn to you, Ms. Willie, but where we left off last time was nearing the end of cross-examination of the first panel that we heard from the tribes and NGO coordinating parties. And I will check in with you, Ms. Willie, on where we are there. And then once we complete cross-examination, or we'll talk through how we're going to do this, and we'll possibly get to redirect. And then my understanding is the next witness we would move to, once we've completed the first panel, is Mr. Stork. And with that, I'll turn to you, Ms. Willie. Do you have an update for us?
Yes, I have a few updates. Mr. Mulcahy and Vice Chair Tayaba are unable to join this morning. So that is one update there. And then I also have sort of a procedural question regarding questioning. Is impeachment allowed in these proceedings?
Yes, my understanding is yes. That's so. I'll give that as the answer that I have on the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anything? And then do you have an update with respect to either Ms. Norris or Chairman Mitchum?
I do not. Ms. Norris is here today, this morning. Chairman Mitchum, I do not have an update. My colleagues might.
Okay.
We don't have an update on Chairman Mitchum at this time.
Understood. Thank you. And we can fit him in as we'll find time for that. And then, thank you. And then Ms. Norris is here. So I think what I'd like to do, and I'll look to the room to see if there are other issues we need to address, but pick up to complete the cross-examination of Ms. Norris by Mr. Ferguson. And then I would turn to you, Ms. Willie, if you have redirect for this first panel of witnesses, and we would go from there. But looking to the room, are there any other procedural issues or procedural issues related to that layout for our first step of our morning? Great. Then with that, I will ask my team to please pin Ms. Norris and Mr. Ferguson. And I will hand things over to you, Mr. Ferguson. Oh, and I will start with this. Ms. Norris, welcome back. I'm glad you can join. And do you recall from Monday, my administration of the oath to you with respect to this proceeding?
I do.
Thank you. And with that, over to you, Mr. Ferguson.
Morning again, Ms. Norris.
Good morning.
I'd like to review a few passages in your testimony, a few more passages. So if we can bring up Friends of the River 2, that would be helpful, Ms. Mullen. And then turn to page 7. Lines 15 through 17. Thank you. Ms. Norris, on lines 15 through 17, you mentioned Coho salmon being a listed species, correct?
My, my understanding is that Chinook and Coho are listed, but they're, but yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Do you agree that Coho salmon do not live in the Sacramento River?
There are, there are multiple species of salmon and four runs that do run in the Sacramento River. So if I miss it, so if salmon are not, if Coho is not there, then it's a, then I apologize for including them, but they are, they are listed as endangered.
Okay, I'm just asking you whether you agree that they, with the statement that Coho salmon do not live in the Sacramento River.
I'm not comfortable answering that question.
Okay. Do you agree that Coho salmon do not live in the Sacramento-Samokine River Bay Delta?
Same answer, uncomfortable answering that question.
Okay. So I would like to return to table 612D in AHO 73. Recall, this is the table that we attempted to bring up, and you were having some difficulty seeing on your phone.
Yeah, thank you for that.
So we go to, Ms. Mullen, if we can go to AHO 73, please. And then turn to page 6-70. And then scroll down, please. Ms. Norris, I just want to confirm again, you indicated that you were familiar with the authority's temperature analysis, correct?
I am.
Okay. So have you, are you familiar with table 612D?
Yes, I am. This, this is what you've got in front of us, yes.
Okay.
Confirmed, yeah.
So do you want to, well, let me just ask a question. Can we scroll down a little bit so we can see the remainder of the table? So do you understand that table 612D shows the change in temperature in the Sacramento River from authority, Sites Project Authority discharges to the river under Alternative 3?
I see that there, yes. This is what you're showing, you're showing, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do you understand that the row labeled 10th percentile means that 10% of the values for a given month show a change in temperature that is equal to or lower than the 10th percentile value?
That's what your chart shows. I mean, I, I understand that your clients, your clients' experts included this in your EIR, but I disagree with it. I'm skeptical of the, of the, the information and data that was used to create this. There are other colleagues that are going to get into this more in detail. But I, I don't dispute that your, your client, the scientist that your clients hired created this chart and that this is the outcomes that they arrived at.
Okay.
That we agree with them, or that there's not other science that should be weighed also.
So what is your basis for disagreeing with these results?
That I disagree with the, the results of your, of the models. This is not, these are, this is not the kinds of numbers that other scientists arrived at. So I do agree that that's what your scientist came up with, but I disagree with the results of the modeling. And there's other information that's out there that refutes this, so.
Well, do you agree that the results in this table contradict your statement that the scientific evidence clearly shows that reservoirs lead to warmer water?
It doesn't dispute the evidence that I have seen. It just that it, 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 those two facts of, or those two pieces of information are, don't agree with each other. They don't align.
Okay. And so just to be clear, you're, it sounds, correct if I'm wrong, but it sounds like your opinion is about temp, the potential temperature impacts of the Sites project are based on the work of other experts that Protestants are offering in this proceeding, is that correct?
It's, it's based on other experts and also on my experience over 25 years working in mercury and fish and watching reservoirs and seeing the temperature and the blue green, the high, the harmful algae blooms that result from them. And knowing that those are exacerbated by warming and that reservoirs, the, the science outside of your chart here and these experts, the science shows that reservoirs increase water temperature, not decrease. So this is different than what I've seen in other studies. So it's based on studies and my, what I've seen in 25 years of working in, in water quality.
Okay. Did any of those other studies you're, you're thinking of, did they concern upstream reservoirs?
There's a, a study of reservoirs in general, and the studies that I've seen are not just in California. They're not just in the United States. They're actually global, and some of them are off.
Upstream, yeah, where, do you have a sense of where those might be located?
I apologize. I don't have that information with me today. I'd have to go back and relook at those so that I can give you the locations.
Do you have a sense of maybe how many you've looked at that are upstream reservoirs?
No, I'm not comfortable answering that question at this time, but I can come back if you'd like, where I can write it to colleagues. Yeah.
That's okay. Let's move on. Can we turn back for a minute to your testimony that just Friends of the River 2 at page 15? And then go to lines 15 through 18. So in lines 15 through 18, you mentioned the need for an analysis of toxins, correct?
Correct.
In, in the soil and present in the water that would serve as the source water for Sites reservoir, correct?
Correct.
And is one of the toxins that you have in mind mercury?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So have you had an opportunity to review the testimony of Mr. Cameron Irvine in this proceeding?
No, I have not. I have not had an opportunity to, to watch all the testimony, and I apologize for that. Or I'm sorry to read all of everyone's testimony.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to review the surface water quality chapter of the final EISEIR?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Can we bring up AHO 73 again at page 644? Great, thank you. That's good. So just returning to your statement in your testimony for a minute, you, you'd suggested there's a need for an assessment of toxins in the soil, correct?
That is one of the two items, yes.
And so if you could take a minute, or maybe you're familiar with it, to read the couple of sentences that start right in the middle of the page here with the, the words "as described", and just let me finish.
You want me to read them?
We can just read it yourself.
Okay. Yeah, I see that.
Okay. So do you, do you agree that the EIR here on page 644 contains an analysis of the potential for mercury in the Sites reservoir footprint soils?
So the, I, I see, again, this is the EIR that the scientists that, that are part of the Sites project proponents have developed. I see, I can read the sentence. I see that it's there, but it's not just the soil. It would also be the water that's moving into it because we know that the Sacramento River contains mercury from all of the tributaries, or I should say most of the tributaries. Well, no, that's not true. Actually, every water body in California does contain some level of mercury. So it is all of them. It's just at different rates. But the Sacramento River was heavily mined and mercury was brought from the mercury mines into those tributaries. And through the, the, the amalgam process, there was 30% of what was brought into those mountains was lost into those river systems. It is endemic in the Sacramento River. You could not fill this reservoir with water and have there not be mercury present.
Okay, well, we'll discuss the mercury in the Sacramento River in a minute, but your testimony was that an analysis of toxins in the soil needs to be done, correct?
Yeah, I would like, I would like to make sure that's done, and I'd like it to be done independently. I, I appreciate that it's here. I would like to see, to see additional studies. I would.
Do you have any reason to?
This is talking about mercury-bearing rocks, but the thing is, is that, and the geology. But the, the issue is, is that mercury was brought from other areas throughout California. So it may not be in the actual geology of it, and even if it is in the geology of it, the, it's less bioavailable than when it's brought there from other areas. So it's, I'm less concerned with the veins, although those are, of course, of, of concern. And I'm very concerned about what else was brought there and what's in the water that we filled with because that's really ready to move into the, the, the aquatic, you know, the small microorganisms that pull it up into the fish.
Well, can you look a little further down in the paragraph where it says, "Because these rock types do not occur in the study area, naturally occurring mercury is not expected to be present in the study area"?
I'm not, that's, that's what I was just referring to, is it's not merely the, that there would be cinnabar in the rock types. It's that the water that you put in there are, is bringing mercury in and decaying plant matter in, in any reservoir that's made, when you, when you start to fill it, that decaying plant matter mixes with the mercury in stream.
Well, based upon this paragraph, would you agree that the EIR team considered the potential for mercury in the, the rocks and the soils?
I think that it looks like they considered it. Whether or not the, that it's accurate, I, I can't attest to that. I would like to see an independent study looked at, but I, as I said, that it's not primarily the rock types and the cinnabar that would be the problem. It's, we're, we're talking about the water that goes into it.
Okay, well, let's
Yeah.
Talk about that.
And I do see a place in here where it says there's no legacy mercury mines in the vicinity. Again, that's not related to the, what's in the water that's put in. There doesn't need to be mercury in the vicinity in order for the mercury in the water to be affecting the, the, the health and safety of the outputs of the reservoir.
Okay. Well, with respect to an analysis of toxins that will be developed, in this context, I assume you may be referring to the development of methyl mercury. Is that?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Can we please bring up Sites 116C? That's Mr. Irvine's testimony. And then turn to page 9. At line 7 through 13. So on page 9 at line 7 through 13, paragraph 23, Mr. Irvine discusses long-term methyl mercury concentrations. Can you just take a minute to read that paragraph? If you're not already familiar with it?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah? I've, I've read it. Thank you.
Okay. And then can you scroll down to page 10? Oh, excuse me. Can we go back up to page 9? I apologize. At lines 23 through 25. Can you take a minute to read those lines, please?
I, I can read that, yeah.
Okay. And then can we go to page 10 at lines 20 through 22? Well, really, you might, can you just read all of paragraph 28?
Yes.
So do you agree that Mr. Irvine accounted for mercury concentrations in the long term?
I believe that his, he did include it in here, and he did account for it. However, I disagree with his evaluation of whether or not it will be increasing methyl mercury and mercury concentrations in fish. I mean, I, I know that he looked at it. I just disagree with his, his analysis.
What's your basis for disagreeing with his analysis about whether there'd be bioaccumulation?
Well, if you look up above in one of the previous paragraphs you showed, I mean, it does say that, that the, the Sites reservoir will be, I'm sorry, you'd have to go up and look at it, but that it's going to, it's not dissimilar from other reservoirs in the area. The other reservoirs in the area increase methyl mercury. And the, so I, I, I don't, I don't see how his argument refutes the fact that this reservoir is going to increase methyl mercury and therefore mercury in fish.
Well, let's
It's not, it's not better, it's, it's not creating a better scenario. And it's not, it, there's, it's not creating a situation where decaying plant matter from, that's from the valley flooding is not going to increase methylation in the, in this, in the reservoir. It's just not factual. It is going to do that. And his, his information, even pointing to other reservoirs, saying it's similar to them, doesn't change. It's yet another location where methyl mercury will be increasing.
Well, let's, let's look at this paragraph. Look at the last sentence, please.
Okay.
So is it your understanding that Mr. Irvine determined that in the short term, which he defines as the first 10 years of operation, methyl mercury concentrations would be twice as high as the long-term concentration?
Either way, it, that's not, that's, that's not supporting lower methyl mercury concentrations in fish. It doesn't help us to move the needle away from increasing mercury in fish.
But he does account for methylation in the short term due to organic matter, correct?
He says it in his sentence, yes. The short-term methyl mercury concentration is expected to be, you know, and I E. two times, you know, yes, it's there, but however, it is increasing mercury in the, in the fish. I mean, that's factual. It's there. That's what, that's what dams and reservoirs cause. That is what happens when you dam, when you dam plant life and trees and the, that is what, there's the fate and transport of mercury in a dammed environment. It's, it's, there's nothing that, there's no refuting that needs to be made here. It's, he's making, he's helping to make my point, actually.
Yeah, I just, I, I wanted to have a discussion about this because your testimony was that none of these analyses have been completed, correct?
They've been completed by your staff according to what they believe, but it does not, none of these, the, these, the EIRs, the ones that are, that are complete, even if, they're, they're not making your case. I, I don't understand your question. So maybe rephrase because I'm trying to figure out. Just because you, the scientist said this in your report doesn't mean that we, that, that I agree with every outcome that they came up with, one. And two, not all of them are complete. And three, this statement in front of me does not mean that there's going to be less methyl mercury in the rivers, two times more, is what he says. And there's other scientists that, that may show that that would be higher. I would like to see independent studies done, to be honest. And I don't see that, that this is making your case. I'm confused to what we're talking about here. Like, what, what is your question?
So have you offered any evidence yourself that would indicate the mercury results would be different than what Mr. Irvine has offered?
There are studies about in all of the, in dams throughout the state. And those studies are in my testimony as cited. And I could find others for you throughout the entirety of the planet that talk about what happens behind a mercury in the fate and transport of what happens when decaying plant matter mixes with mercury, and it's well-known science. And it's, and also he's included some of that as well. I'm not, I don't know that I trust his, his entire, his entire argument or that I see that it's entirely accurate, but even what's in front of me right now shows that there's, that there's going to be increased amount of methyl mercury from this creation of this reservoir. So what is your question? I'm sorry.
So did you use any of the studies that you say you cited in your testimony to do a, a specific analysis of the potential impacts the mercury concentrations from operation of the Sites reservoir?
I don't have to. If the science says it in every, and all of the science backs it, including what you're putting in front of me. Including your own people. I, I feel like I've answered this question now a few times. I don't, I'm, I'm sorry. Including your own people. I, I feel like I've answered this question now a few times. I don't, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'm not going to change the fact that the science across the board and the fate and transfer, of, of mercury in a damned reservoir increases methyl mercury. And there's no way to remove that statement and make it less factually true. It is factual according to your own experts and others. It may even be more than what he's saying here. I would need, I would like to see a more in-depth study. Thank you. But either way, it's still going to be increasing methyl mercury, even without a more in-depth study, I'm seeing it right now in front of me.
Are all increases in methyl mercury necessarily harmful?
It, all increases of methyl mercury add to the me- the mercury load that ends up in the fish that is ingested by humans and is dangerous for human health and causes permanent learning disabilities in a developing fetus. If a mother eats traditional foods that includes mercury-laden fish and it will result in potentially later in life, heart attacks in that individual. So it, it, permanent learning disabilities as they grow and develop and also heart attacks. And there's actually three hundred symptoms that mer- that, that mercury in the human body causes. Those are just the two that are like the, uh, that are, that are the ones that the, um, medical community looks at as the, uh, the, the most um, obvious harms and the ones that are the mo- been most documented. It moves through the placenta. It moves through the umbilical cord into a developing fetus where it's two times more, in, more concentrated than it is in the mother. So what it's doing is it's taking the pregnant women, sorry.
I appreciate your, your thorough answers, but we do need to get this through.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
On the response to Mr. Ferguson's particular.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to ask you, based on the paragraphs you read here in Mr. Irvine's testimony, whether you agree that he accounts for the methyl mercury concentration in the Sacramento River?
It looks as if he analyzed, he analyzed it, but I can't state whether or not it's, it's a hundred percent accurate. I've seen
No, I'm not asking you to.
Locations. No, I see that it's there. It's physically there. It, yes, I see it.
Okay. Thank you. Just finally, uh, can we turn back to Friends of the River Two? At page nineteen. And the bottom of the page, line twenty-five. Ms. Norris, in paragraph thirty-eight, you mentioned that California tribes are adopting their own consultation policies. And the tribe should be asked whether they maintain a policy so it can guide consultation activities.
Correct.
Are you aware of any tribes that would be impacted by the sites project that have consultation policies?
I haven't, I do not initiate or participate in consultation unless asked. I have not been asked to participate in any consultation where a tribe has been, has been asked to do this or to, or been asked to share their consultation policies. Um, and I haven't done a survey of all of them. I just know that there are tribes that I've talked to that have said they're working on them. And I know of, um, a policy in the Kuduk, that the Kuduk tribe has put together that's very well-written that, uh, I've heard tribes are, have looked at in creation of their own.
But you're not aware of any consultation policies that exist for, that, that tribes have, have prepared among those tribes that be impacted by the project, correct?
No, but this is why I say in there that the first step should be that the agency ask if there is one that they should be looking towards.
All right, that's all the questions I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. I believe with that, I will turn. Well, let me just confirm, Mr. Ferguson, does that complete your cross of this? Panel at this time?
Yes.
Thank you. And I believe I had gone through before we closed, uh, on Monday, and my understanding is that there were no other questions for this panel. Um, so if, if I have that mistaken, please speak up. But with that, I believe I'll turn to you, Ms. Willie, if you have redirect questions for any of these witnesses.
Yes, thank you. Um, I do have some questions. Um, excuse me, Mr. Marson may um, be joining. I know he had a nine o'clock appointment, um, but I think I can proceed without him at this point. Um, and so, um, let me just get oriented here, um.
I'm sorry. While there's a pause, Ms. Norris mentioned a tribe, Kanook. Could I get the spelling of that?
Karuk.
Karuk, yeah.
K A R U K.
Thank you so much. Sorry to interrupt.
Um, okay, so Ms. Norris, I'm gonna go back to, um, some questions that were asked, um, on Monday regarding, um, tribal beneficial uses. Um, could you explain a little better or a little bit more in-depth the difference between um, tribal beneficial uses that are meant to be implemented under basin plans and those um, meant to be implemented through the Isweeby?
Th- thank you. Happy to. So, uh, regarding the question about that was asked, Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Ferguson asked about, um, has there been any, um, water bodies designated with tribal beneficial uses in the Sacramento River? I don't think he said which rivers, but he said in the area, and that would be the Sacramento River, um, San Francisco Bay Area. The answer is no. Um, that establishing these uses is in process in both regions. Uh, tribes and regional boards are working towards adopting those TBUs and designated water bodies with them so that the regional boards and the state water boards can have all the information in front of them when they deliberate any decisions, um, including this one, and evaluate all uses in the region and make their decisions. So that's something that's happening now. We would really like an opportunity for those to be in place, and we agree that there's no TBUs in those basin plans and that they should be adopted and waters should be designated in order to make, uh, really informed inde- decisions. It's related to the anti-degradation policies. Um, there's other beneficial uses that would be impacted. So regardless of whether the TBUs are there, the others are, um, in region one, you can see tribal beneficial uses have been adopted. Um, but the biggest thing in that piece is how can water birds make informed decisions unless they know um, all of the uses in the watershed and what those numerical objectives are because uh, TB, um, total maximum daily loads and a lot of regulatory.
I'm sorry, because total maximum daily?
Oh, sorry, TMDLs. Yeah, total maximum daily loads. I forgot. I need to speak slowly for you. I apologize. Um, so that's the regional board piece. Um, but for the Isweeby, the Isweeby was created as a, um, a support for what, creating water quality objectives for mercury specifically. And that allows for the protection of fish consumption at a rate point five, four point five meals per week. And that's really the rate that's accepted as subsistence throughout the, uh, the United States through the federal EPA programs. Um, California's objective for four point five per week includes that fishing seventy percent trophic level three, which includes salmon and thirty percent of trophic level four. And so for regions to be able to meet or exceed this object, objective, it requires, um, that there's a continuance of salmon in the watershed and that their habitat will need to be protected throughout the watershed to support the lifecycle of salmon. So, um, my concern is that if we continue to develop water quality or water projects that increase mercury and decrease fish um, health, that will never meet this water quality objective, where in the future, we won't be able to sustain that objective. Um, this is at the same time that we're working very hard throughout the state in order to, um, make sure that regional boards have the, uh, information in front of them to make those informed decisions and to protect human and, um, aquatic health. So that's it. Thanks.
And so, um, just for clarity's sake, there's two tribal beneficial uses are applicable in two different separate situations. And the one you're referring to in your testimony is the Isweeby beneficial uses.
Yeah, I was referring to the Isweeby primarily, but I did talk about the length of time that it's taken for regional boards to adopt um, beneficial uses in their watersheds, and it's been fourteen years, which is excessively long. A lot of that time was spent with agencies. I think I mentioned already, agencies speaking with each other and not including tribes in those conversations. Now that those conversations are increasing, um, are now including tribes, the movement is happening much faster. And, uh, we would recommend that large projects like that these beneficial uses be, um, included in the basin plans before we make big decisions. And I think that they could be the process to move tribal beneficial uses could be expedited.
Thank you. Um, and so in your, um, experience, um, I know you, in response to some of Mr. Ferguson's questions, stated that you've not done analysis yourself, but, um, did you ever take samples or complete modeling?
We did, actually. Um, so we helped to design sampling plans. Um, we've worked with the S, San Francisco Estorre Institute and their work under the, um, the SWAMP project, um, the acronym is W, uh, uh, S W A M P, um, to help to identify locations for sampling. And, um, let's see, um, we sampled in Clear Lake and we sampled in Lake Mendocino, which is a reservoir. Um, and we went, went out with, uh, fish and wildlife and did fish shocking. We put traps out, um, especially for, uh, um, crawdads, um, and because it's easier to catch them that way. And we were filling, uh, data gra- gaps. So to make sure that, that we can make fish consumption advisories for fish, we need to be able to have a large enough sample and that it's, um, spaced throughout the, the water body that's being sampled. So we have done those.
And, um, what types of data did you gather from those? Sample and modeling?
Well, we, like I said, we were filling data gaps, so a lot of the times you'll have a species of fishes. A lot of traditional fish had not been sampled. So we were sampling fish that m- m- most sports fishers haven't, are not eating. Um, it's, and we also, uh, gathered largemouth bass because largemouth bass is an indicator species for mercury. They're high on the trophic level fit, level. And, um, that enables us, because most water bodies have been sampled for that, it enables to do comparisons. And, um, we do find, um, that if there's high levels of concentration in largemouth bass, then that means that there's, that there's methyl mercury uh, moving through that system. Yeah.
Thank you. And then, uh, if we could pull up, um, I sent in some documents this morning. Um, I think it is, uh, redirect one file.
And we did receive those, so I think we'll be able to pull those up.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Willie, if you don't mind, can you just briefly describe the document? I think we renamed it with a number.
Sure. Um, it's the Department of Interiors Department Manual.
Great, thank you.
And if you could go to page three, it should be a highlighted section. So, Ms. Marson, I'm gonna ask you some questions about, um, traditional ecological knowledge. Um, are you familiar with the US Department of Interior's definition, definition of, um, indigenous knowledge or traditional ecological knowledge that's seen here? And you can read it if you need.
Yes, I am.
And do you feel that's, um, an accurate definition or representation of generally what, um, traditional ecological knowledge encompasses?
In part, I think there, there's a piece missing in it that, uh, traditional ecological knowledge or indigenous knowledge is applied by the tribe from the area that the project is coming, is being, you know, is, is in. Um, this one doesn't include that. Um, I think it's implied. But I think it's a good idea for people to recognize that it's something that's done in partnership with the tribes because um, each tribe has a place-based culture. And, um, it wouldn't, if, if I applied my, the TK from my community, it would be different than the TK from your community or another tribal person's community.
Thank you. Um, and then if we could bring up, um, redec- redirect to, um, it is the US Fish and Wildlife Traditional Ecological Knowledge page. And if you could scroll down, there's another little highlighted section. And so this is a part of the, um, US Fish and Wildlife, uh, definition of what, um, TK encompasses that was developed in two thousand and eleven, so it's a little bit older. Um, but would you say this is a generally an accurate statement, this highlighted one?
You think it, this is much shorter, right? Um, this is, this excerpt is, um, there are multiple definitions of traditional ecological knowledge. Um, I think that what's interesting is that agencies are putting forward definitions, um, like this one and the other. Um, and, but really, it's something that, um, that tribes would need to be, it's, it's, it's the tribe's ecological knowledge, so I would prefer that the tribe had an opportunity to review all of these and make edits to them. Um, but to answer your question, um, it does, just the word and more is, it's just very truncated. But, uh, but yes, it's, it's, it's okay. It's just really small, but.
Yeah, I, I'm just asking you as a tribal person to, you, you don't have to, um, feel the need to speak on behalf of the tribes that are represented here.
Okay, yeah. As, as a native person, I look at this and it's the, it's the view of our people. It doesn't talk about this, the space of time of how long our traditional ecological knowledge goes and that it's actually something that not one individual holds. It's something the entirety of the community holds. So for example, if someone asks me a question, I might not be comfortable asking unless I spoke with a certain members of my community and elders that I know that are going to confirm with me that, um, that, that I've got it right before answering or bring in a group. And, um, I do see that uh, Mr. Marson's hand is upraised and he might have something to add as well, but that's, that's my experience.
Yes, uh, miss, I don't see Mr. Marson's hand, um, but.
Maybe it went down. Maybe it was in, uh, not on purposeful. So, oh, I see it.
Yes, if, if you have more to add, um, Mr. Marson, feel free.
Well, just quickly, I, I'm a California Kuaia Indian. And, uh, you know, and I think the Kuaia share a, 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 a common, a common belief. Our belief is, we believe in a creator and we believe that the creator gave us a place. And we're from that place. And we have old responsibilities to that place. And we're not something that's separate and apart from that place. We're an integral part of that place. So the fish, they owe a responsibility to us. They owe a responsibility to get upstream and spawn. So there's a, so that we have food to eat. We have a responsibility to the fish, not to overfish it. Because if we do, we can satisfy ourselves, but then we take away from the family, from the clan, from the village, from the place, because there's other things that are in the place that have the right to take those fish as well. We see ourselves not as something that's separate from the environment. We see ourselves as an integral part of the environment. We share the same air, the same soil, the same place. And so you know, when you talk about, uh, destroying the river so that the, you destroy the salmon. destroying the river so that you destroy the salmon, you're destroying us. We don't see ourselves separate from the salmon because we're dependent upon it. And so everything that the creator gave us is related. We all come from the same source. And so when you, when you attack, you know, the deer or the salmon or cut the trees, you're attacking my grandmother, my cousins, my aunts, because we're all dependent upon it. We don't see ourselves as separate from it. So I don't know if that makes any sense to anybody, but, you know, I don't see my, when I look out into the, into the world, I don't see the trees are separate from me or the animals are separate from me. We're all from the same source. We all share the same life. We all share the same space. We all have responsibilities for, with each other. We all are dependent on each other.
And Officer Kenzie, I would like to move to strike Mr. Marston and Ms. Norris's testimony on this issue of indigenous knowledge and tribal ecological knowledge. I, I don't recall ever asking either witness about this issue. I do recall, I believe Ms. Norris mentioned tribal knowledge once in response to a question, but this was certainly not an area of cross-examination.
I, I have a purpose for doing this.
Well, I'm sure you have a purpose, Ms. Willie, but what is the connection to Mr. Ferguson's cross-examination?
Well, in his cross-examination, he challenged seemingly the expertise of our witnesses, asking if they had performed analysis, if they were biologists, hydrologists. And I want to get to the point that traditional ecological knowledge is a branch of science in which tribal people are experts. And I just want to get that established in the record.
Do you want to respond to that, Mr. Ferguson, before I rule?
Well, Ms. Norris and Mr. Marston had a chance to mention that, that they believe it's part of their analysis or part of the toolbox that they might use to analyze these issues, and they never did that, so I'd.
Well, I haven't asked them about that yet.
It's, so I'm, I'm going to allow this to go forward, but with, in the, with respect to questions that Mr. Ferguson did have with respect to the expertise of the witnesses. So I will allow this line of questioning, keeping it focused on the expertise and the basis of knowledge of these particular witnesses. Please go ahead, Ms. Willie.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Would you consider science and studies of river flows and water quality that were conducted by local tribes in this case? Sugar Springs Band of Niwok Indians, I think Vice Chair mentioned studies done by their department. Would you consider that those science and studies part of traditional ecological knowledge?
Well, absolutely, because they're incorporating the information that they're receiving from their community that does come from traditional knowledge. For, and also the, the, as what Mr. Marston was talking about is the way that we have the reciprocal relationship and responsibility to species. It's part of the, the, the formation of those, the health of those species is because of the, the work that tribal members have done. For example, making sure that fish make it to certain reaches of the river in order to make sure the largest and most healthiest of those fish make it through and spawn and, and increase the, the health of the species. So that's just one example of, of, of how TK and a tribal environmental department would, would fold in information the community would have, which is the, the place where the fish need to be at before you start gathering at the mouth of a river, for example. That's just one example, but that's, that's part of how, showing how the management TK and the, the science behind it kind of can fold in.
Thank you. And so as a tribe, as a sovereign nation, has an environmental department for traditional ecological knowledge department, would you say those departments equate to, say, the California, what the California EPA is for the state of California?
The, you know, the tribal environmental departments have a huge amount of information that hasn't been folded in to EPA records. And I think that there, there's an issue with the, the actual, like what, there's multiple different ways of putting information into their CEDAN and there's a WQX, et cetera. They don't cross-talk well. So the data itself is, doesn't, it doesn't always move back and forth. And I know that there's a, there's work groups working on that right now. But it's, to answer your question, you know, directly, it's absolutely. And it's something that I've seen some tribal environmental departments. You can see it real clearly in Clear Lake, actually, where the tribe is way ahead of the local agencies for harmful algae bloom evaluation, for example, and has learned so much from that relationship. If that could be increased throughout the Sacramento River watershed, I think that we would do much, much better in protecting and supporting management strategies that will increase the health of the watersheds.
Thank you. And yesterday, there was a line of questioning, oh, go ahead, Mr. Marston.
Indian people have oral tradition that's handed down from one generation to another.
Mr. Mr. Marston, and maybe you can set this up, Ms. Willie, but Ms. Willie's question was about the environment, specifically about environmental departments of tribes, as I recall.
I'm getting it.
Directly to that, okay.
Yeah, but what, all I was going to say is tribal environmental departments in many instances have more information than other federal, state, or local agencies. And the reason that they do is because they have access to what is called oral tradition or oral history. Non-Indian society, their studies, and those environment, tribal environmental departments have all those studies. They go out and they acquire them and they have them. But in addition to that, they have information that the other federal and state agencies don't have through oral tradition that's been communicated and provided to those environmental departments. And I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. And so yesterday, there was a line of questioning, excuse me, for Vice Chair Tayab, or on Monday, I'm sorry. There was a line of questioning for Vice Chair Tayaba about whether or not she had included certain analysis or data from, that her department had conducted. Ms. Norris, I'm wondering if you could explain, and she said that those, that had not been shared. Ms. Norris, could you explain the importance of indigenous data sovereignty?
Yeah. So unfortunately, we still live in a, in a, in a place where tribal knowledge is either sidelined as being less important or is incorporated and misincorporated in. The, the, an article will be read and then folded into a document without peer review from the, the tribe that included it. There's also sacred places that include prayer where there are, and there are artifacts that people still dig for and sell. And people are trying to copy tribal ceremonies, unfortunately. There's some, I don't know what you'd call them nowadays, but it used to be kind of like new age, you know, groups that'll, that try to infiltrate in and do those ceremonies incorrectly and that's culturally inappropriate and very offensive. So depending on what the information is, some tribes, some tribes, well, all tribes have to look what they're, what they're putting out publicly to make sure that it can't inadvertently hurt, hurt their people. I think you're on mute, Ms. Willie.
Thank you. You can take down this exhibit for now, thank you. On Monday, there's also a line of questioning in a similar vein about whether or not the Katchal Deha tribe had provided certain information regarding tribal cultural resources. In your experience, are there times when tribes do not want to share certain information regarding tribal cultural resources with outside entities?
Yeah, as I mentioned, there, there's, there's grave robbers. There's individuals that steal artifacts and sell them. There was something that just came across recently where something, going out and finding grindstones and selling them. Each tribe and even down to the families have different ways that they address when something, an artifact is found. Some say that you put it back exactly where it is and bury it. Some things were purposely buried because they could be damaging and they are not meant to be disturbed. And also there's going back to those places where our communities and families are. That's part of our prayer locations. So if you know you have a burial ground that has your ancestry in there, you want to be able to go back to those places for, for prayer. And some of those, those locations, disclosing them to the public or putting them in documents that can be, that, that can be, you know, the word voidable, you know, is, is dangerous. And so it, it has not been the practice of tribes to provide all of the information so that we don't have to worry about what will happen in the future. We've had to put rickrack on things and make, and hide areas that we would need for prayer that are now no longer accessible just because we're afraid that someone will steal them. So we can't get in there and do what we would need to do for prayers because we've had to, you know, putting up cameras to try to capture people that are sneaking in to dig is still happening.
Thank you. And in your experience or understanding of the consultation process, either formally through AB52 or informally, as sites has done, is it a requirement that tribes disclose very, disclose very detailed information about tribal cultural resources on the request of the outside party?
It is not. And actually, that's one of the functions of, of the government-to-government consultation, is that communication can happen that is not shared.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Marston, I'd like to ask you, you indicated on Monday that you had some answers to questions. Mr. Ferguson had asked Ms. Norris, to refresh your memory, they had to do with Indian reserved, I think Indian reserved rights and as they're related to tribal water rights. And I wanted to give you the opportunity to give a response to those questions. So do you have an additional, any additional comments that you would like to add regarding Indian water rights?
Mr. Marston, are you with us? You're on mute, for one, but you're also not on camera.
Yeah. I want to object to this line of questioning because I was asking Ms. Norris about statements in her testimony. And Mr. Marston certainly had an opportunity to respond at that time, but I, I, it's not clear that the issues she's going to raise here are element issues I was asking Mr. Marston about.
Well, if Mr. Marston is here, I'll allow him to respond because I don't think he did have a chance to respond to. I believe I directed him that he could not respond unless you asked him directly. So I will give him a chance. Mr. Marston, did you hear the question?
So could you repeat the question, because I want to make sure I, I.
Sure. I just wanted to ask if you had further response for questions that Ms. Norris was asked on Monday regarding Indian water rights, Indian reserved water right. I know you had wanted to respond and were not allowed to.
Well, I mean, it's in my testimony and I can't overemphasize the fact that state law does not govern Indian, federally reserved Indian water rights. Those are governed by federal law and specifically federal common law under the United States Supreme Court's decisions in Winters and Arizona versus California and by overriding federal statute, which is 25 U.S.C. Section 177. Those waters that are reserved to the reservation are the waters of the United States that the United States government holds in, owns in trust for the tribes. And then, and with the, when the United States government formally recognized and set aside an area of land, regardless of how it was set aside, because a reservation, regardless of whether it's created by treaty or statute or executive order, is under the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals decision in Blake versus Arnett, it's still federal lands that are set aside under this, and, and, and have the same status regardless of how they are set aside and how they are created. When the United States government takes action to recognize lands that have been occupied by an Indian tribe, they reserve to that tribe enough water to fulfill the purposes for which the reservation was created. And the purpose for which the reservation is created is to create a homeland for the Indians.
Mr. Marston, I, I appreciate your testimony. I think we've heard it, it's in your written testimony. I also have some understanding of, of reserved water rights. I just want to make sure we're not repeating ourselves here. I think, I think you've made your point and it's, it's quite clear on the, on reservation.
But I just want to make clear that it's not, it's not for a single purpose, right? It's, if traditionally the tribes fish, then there's enough water to maintain their fishery. If the, if, if the, if the tribes have, you know, endangered species, there's enough, it's, it's enough water to be able to maintain those endangered species or to maintain a watershed that's necessary to, to re, to re, to recharge groundwater that lies below the reservation, which is necessary to sustain that groundwater on a sustained yield basis. So it's not just one purpose, it's many purposes.
Thank you. And then I think I just have one more question for Ms. Norris.
Can we pause there for a moment? I just, I have a question for Mr. Marston before he, if you would please stay with us. And thank you, Ms. Willie, while I interrupt. I did have a question, Mr. Marston, that maybe you can help with. And Mr. Ferguson, you'll, you're certainly have a chance to respond. This is, I'm, I'm about to ask the witness somewhat of a legal question, so I realize this is a little different. But based on your experience, Mr. Marston, is it your understanding that the federally recognized tribes that claim federal reserved water rights have standing to assert those rights? Or is it the case that the federal, I, I'm just trying to understand whether the United States as trustee is the only entity that has standing to assert those rights? For example, in a court of law, I don't mean, this proceeding is a little different, but in a court of law.
Yeah, no, that's, that's well said. The, a, the United States government has standing to step in as the trustee of the tribe to prevent diversions away from the reservation that are going to interfere with the ability of the tribes to appropriate water, their federally reserved water that's reserved to them. And the tribes, separate and apart from the United States government, have standing to do so as well. I currently represent the Kewee tribe in the Fallbrook litigation on the general stream adjudication of the Santa Margarita River. That lawsuit was initially brought by the United States. When the Indian tribes thought that their beloved trustee wasn't doing a sufficient job for them, they filed motions, they intervened in that lawsuit on their, on their own behalf in order to litigate and protect their own interests, separate and apart from the interest that the United States government had to ensure that there was water for camp penalty.
Thank you, Mr. Marston, I appreciate that. With that, back to you, Ms. Willie, thank you.
Thank you. And so Ms. Norris, I'm trying to remember back to Monday, but you were asked about. to Monday, but you were asked about impacts to tribes in the Central Valley. And you had stated there were several tribes up and down the watershed that would be impacted. Now that you, you know, in the car, would you be able to provide a little bit more information about which of those tribes? Which tribes there are, how many that would be impacted by this project?
Yeah, so the California Indian Environmental Alliance was the tribal engagement coordinator for the Sacramento River Mountain Counties, San Francisco, also the North Coast Integrated Regional Water Management. And in that, we had to create, develop contact lists and outreach for Erwimps. So we, our contact list included 50 tribes with traditional territory in the Sacramento River area. And there's five that we worked with closely in the San Francisco area. And then of that, we ended up with a list of over 150 contracts in the Sacramento Mountain Counties area. So I'm sorry, when I said 50 tribes, that was in the Sacramento and Mountain Counties areas. And that's about 150 contracts that we had. So the question of, you know, which tribes would be impacted, it's honestly potentially all of them because we're talking about the degradation of water quality throughout a watershed. And the, the tribes would be concerned and want to know about how this will affect them and to do their own analysis. And they haven't been outreach to except for the, the, I remember reading that three tribes were consulted with and then another after the AB 52 statute. So there's, what that means is that there's many more tribes that need to have the opportunity to provide the water board with their concerns and how this could impact them.
Thank you. And you mentioned one acronym, Erwim. Could you just?
Oh. Integrated Regional Water Management. That's a, a project of the Department of Water Resources.
Thank you. And with that, I think all of my other questions have been mostly answered for redirect.
Thank you, Ms. Willie. And Ms. Norris, would you say again, what document, it just went by too quickly for me, what document was where you compiled? For which you compiled a list of contacts and I think you said in the Sacramento and Mountain Counties?
It was for the Integrated Regional Water Management Program, in specific, the DACD program, which was the Disadvantaged Tribal Involvement Program. And so it wasn't so much that it was a document that we compiled it for, the, the water management plans are the document and the, what we did was the outreach in order to engage the tribes to participate in the program and to help to guide the development of those documents.
And by we, do you mean CIEA? Is that?
The California Indian Environmental Alliance, the tribes that helped us because we, when we have meetings, we have host tribes and we end up working in partnership with, with tribes from the region. And the, the entity that is the, that guides the Erwim, so often counties.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. With that, I will turn back to you, Mr. Ferguson. Based on that redirect, you have additional questions for these witnesses?
I do.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. So we'll start with the last set of questions, Ms. Norris. Ms. Willie asked you about a group of tribes that you will believe, that you believe will be impacted. Correct?
Yes.
And in that response, you didn't specifically identify any, any specific tribe, correct?
I missed the number. I can actually go in if you like and look at.
No, I'm just asking, in your response, did you provide any specific name of a tribe?
Not in my response to her, no.
Okay. Have you conducted any sort of analysis that would indicate that there would be certain project impacts on the tribes you have in mind?
Yes, I mentioned them previously in my previous testimony, the impacts.
Which analysis have you conducted about impacts on those tribes?
All, all of the, all of the information that I provided about mercury and fish has to do with the entirety of the watershed and the tribes are, are fish consuming peoples. And so each of them would be concerned about fish in their area. And we've had a lot of meetings having to do with creating the, the the ISWIB definitions. And in those, when we did that, the interested tribes arrived. When we first asked for tribal beneficial uses to be included in the Sacramento River Valley, I mean, that, and the Sacramento River Basin Plan, there were 14 tribes that participated. And that, those, that was a long time ago and we had done minimal outreach at that point. We did more, our, our contact list was expounded quite a bit after we started the ISWIB.
And none of that, it doesn't sound like any of that were linked, potential impacts of the sites project to impacts on these tribes, correct?
I'm talking about the, how the sites project will impact the watershed. And the sites project itself, there are, there are a small number of tribes that have been consulted with, one of which I work with rather closely, that's Round Valley Indian Tribes. And they have not been outreach to about this project and they have membership from that, the Sites Reservoir Project footprint area.
Okay.
They have not received, I spoke with council, they have not received information about this project.
Are you aware of whether any of the tribes that you have in mind in this group that would be impacted according to your testimony? Any barrier to, are you aware of whether any of them commented on the environmental impact report?
I don't know that they were outreach to.
Well, is there any barrier on them commenting on environmental impact report if they're not reached out to?
If they're not reached out to? Well.
Let's strike that. Is that, is it necessary, was it necessary for the Sites Project Authority to outreach to a tribe in order for it to comment on the environmental impact report?
I don't, I don't feel comfortable answering the question. I don't have that information. I apologize.
Okay. Are you aware of any reason that these tribes couldn't have participated in this water right hearing?
In this water rights hearing?
Yes.
Well, let me, well, first of all, let me real quickly, if I may, you had said, is there any reason why they might not have participated? I don't have the list of who you outreach to, but my understanding was is I heard it was 13 to 14 tribes and I cited there's 30 that whose resources might be impacted. The outreach took place during COVID and the offices were closed down. So I don't know that they knew about that. As far as participating in this, we see, although we.
I'm going to, I'm going to object. She can't speculate as to why tribes were not able to participate in this process.
I don't think you can object to your own witness's response, but that may be your witness, right? I mean.
That's right. What is, what, maybe we need to go back to the question, Mr. Ferguson.
I'm objecting to the question, yeah.
What, what was your question?
I'm asking if there's any reason that you're aware of as to why the tribes you say will be impacted couldn't have participated in this water right proceeding.
And that question I will allow. So go ahead, Ms. Norris. I think.
Well, I can speak to Round Valley. I haven't spoken with every single tribe in the watershed. It's not, we don't currently have project with every single one of them, so I, I don't have. It's not in any of our work plans to outreach about this project one. It's not a responsibility. It's the agency's responsibility to outreach, but Round Valley I work with regularly, they didn't know about this until we were already, until the, until it was already moving forward. They had not been outreach to. They did not receive information about it. And so that's why they're not here. I informed them about this basically the end of last week. And went, oh, they went, really? We don't know about this. Yeah.
Okay. Well, assuming that's true, then that may, there may be one tribe, correct? But you, you cited 30. And you haven't provided any more specific information on any other tribe, correct?
There's, there's 50 in the watershed, 50. And they have not been, it is to my understanding from your own testimony, you guys outreach to 14 or 13 to 14. That means that there is a significant number of potentially impacted tribes that have not yet received this outreach.
But you haven't done any specific analysis, right, as to how, whether and how this specific tribes would be impacted, correct?
If there's, I've mentioned in previous testimony about the water quality from the operations of Sites Reservoir being degraded and the warm temperatures being a problem for the fish. And there's others that are going to speak to that as well. Fish are important subsistence food for tribes in the Sacramento River watershed. And therefore, any impacts to their subsistence foods or their cultural heritage or ability to practice cultural, you know, whether that be prayer, whether that be other food sources, whether that be medicines, whether all of the things that involve, are involved in culture could be impacted. So I don't need to do an analysis for each tribe of how they would be impacted. That's up to the tribes themselves to articulate, should they be given the information in order to do that analysis and should they be outreach to, which is, that's the responsibility of, of the agencies.
Okay.
I'm just gonna, Mr. Marston has had his hand raised for a second and I just want to make sure he has an opportunity to.
I guess my questions right now are focused on Ms. Norris. I will have a question or two for Mr. Marston.
I understand. I just want to see if there's some other concern that.
Well, your question was whether or not any tribes are going to be.
Mr. Marston, the question was not directed to you. Mr. Ferguson can decide whether he would like to hear from you on these particular issues. All right, so procedural question, let's wait.
Okay. So I'm going to turn to the, Ms. Norris, you indicated that there are certain reasons tribes would not want to share information about tribal cultural resources, correct?
Correct.
And with respect to the Keshuldehi, are you aware of whether Keshuldehi cited any of these reasons?
I haven't read their testimony.
Yeah, but are you aware of the conversations that they had with the authority through the consultation process?
No, I'm not privy to consultation unless the tribe was to bring me in as a expert. So I don't have that information.
So you don't know whether any of the reasons you mentioned, and I think it was stealing in particular, you don't know if that's an issue?
I would not know that. I was not in those meetings.
I'm sorry, I'm not, yeah, overlap, thank you.
Let Mr. Ferguson finish the question, please. Thank you.
Yeah.
So you don't know whether stealing was a concern of the Keshuldehi and was a reason for them to not provide certain information, correct?
I did not read their testimony. I have no information to provide you on what they said. I was not part of their consultation meetings either.
Okay. So do you agree that indigenous people or tribal people need to be involved meaningfully in consultation in order for the agency to understand what you've identified as indigenous knowledge or tribal ecological knowledge?
Yes.
Okay.
But the word meaningfully, I'm not sure what your meaning of that word for you. I know that for tribes, it has to do with, I mean, there's a myriad of things that it has to do with. So I'm just, I'm not sure about the use of that word in your question, so.
Do you agree that the tribes are the are the primary source of that tribal ecological, ecological knowledge?
Tribes and the designated membership of their tribes, there's certain individuals that are keepers of knowledge that more, some of the elders may have more information, for example, than a younger person, you know, but yes, the tribes do that. And they can identify who those individuals are that can speak on their behalf.
And do you agree that for an agency to address issues that are important to a tribe that concern tribal ecological, ecological knowledge, the agency needs to be made aware of those issues by the tribe?
As, as much as it is appropriate for the tribe to provide that information or safe for them to do so.
Okay. With respect to your experience sampling, that's water quality sampling, correct?
It's fish tissue sampling in the case of mercury.
Okay. Did any of that work involve evaluating sources of mercury within a watershed?
When there, we, we did look at where the concentrations of fish in different water bodies to see if there was higher concentrations in fish at different areas, but we're talking, when fish are anadromous, they're moving throughout a system. So that makes it very difficult. When you're talking about very small fish that don't, like crawdads that don't travel very far, that's more site specific, if that helps. So we did look at those things, yes, but I'm not sure if I'm understanding your question.
The mercury or methyl mercury doesn't originate in the fish, correct?
No, it originates in the decaying plant matter and the smaller species of, of microorganisms and then moves up through the food chain into the fish.
So.
It's in the watershed in the soil. Sorry.
So your work in fish tissue sampling didn't involve looking at the sources of mercury that was in the fish you were sampling, correct?
It involved what water body they're in. And then as far as those water bodies, we did try to develop cleanup plans for those water bodies. So in some cases, it did involve looking, trying to identify those sources. However, the mercury is within so many different areas of the watershed that for many species, especially those that move throughout the watershed, it's difficult to identify the specific source for it. We know the general loading coming from all of the sources.
Okay. Do you have any expertise in evaluating the fate and transfer, fate and transport of mercury in a watershed?
Luckily have amazing colleagues that I've been able to bring on to help us to look at those portions. And we're able to cite, just to look at their documentation for that.
So your sampling work didn't involve any sort of fate and transport analyses, correct?
Mine didn't. I read peer reviewed articles that I included in my, in my testimony, my written testimony. Right? Those, those core scientists that we work with.
Okay.
Many of those are the same individuals that work with the water boards because we were working on creating Office of Environmental Health and Hazard Fish Consumption advisories. And so we, and we were all working on the TMDLs and the ISWIB together. So it's a lot of the same scientists that you'll see cited and used and, you know, by the water boards.
Okay. I think Ms. Willie in part asked you about modeling when she raised this question, but the, the work you did sampling didn't involve modeling, correct?
We didn't do the modeling. The, the partners that we had in the science community did.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not, that's not what my area of expertise. I rely on those experts.
Okay. Okay, thanks. I do have one question for Mr. Marston. He's still with us. Then I'm finished. Mr. Marston, in is it your opinion that fishing is a purpose of the Keshuldehi Reservation?
Yes.
And what is your basis for that opinion?
Because the Indians, since time immemorial, have always fished in the Sacramento River for salmon and other native fish of the river.
The Keshuldehi, huh?
Yes.
Where, what evidence do you cite to validate that?
The, the history. It's well documented that the Windtoon Indians from that reservation fished or salmon in the Sacramento River. The Sacramento River, a portion of it actually flows above and across lands owned by the United States of America and trust for the tribe. And Indians have always fished to sustain themselves. And therefore, when the reservation was created, one of the purposes for which it was created was to allow the Indians to maintain the lifestyle that they had always Was to allow the Indians to maintain the lifestyle that they had always. Maintained since time immemorial and, and, and their lives have always involved. Have always involved fishing. Your environmental impact report should have a whole section on that. If it was sufficient under the California Environmental Quality Act to accurately. Identify the environment and identify the impacts that the environment would have. On not only fish, but human beings. Human beings are part of the environment and the Windtoon Indians on the Kaluza Reservation are part of that environment. So what does your own environmental impact report say about that? I suspect nothing. It's part of your problem.
Ms. Norris, I have one more question for you. Are you aware of any tribes within the project area that? Provided indigenous knowledge to the authority?
I'm not part of the consultation. So indigenous knowledge would have normally been provided in that place and I've, I'm not a party to that. I'm not an agency staff person. We're a non, we're a tribal nonprofit. So I would not have brought into those.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. And with that, thank you, Ms. Norris. Thank you, Mr. Marston. And thank you to the remainder of the panelists who I realize are not here right now. But I appreciate your time and appreciate your participation in this proceeding.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Yes, please, Mr. Ferguson.
Can I assume there's no redirect for Mr. Mulkey or? Missed out.
That's my understanding, but Ms. Willie.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't have redirect though.
Thank you. It is a good time for us to take a break. My expectation would be we'd take a 10 minute break and then come back and pick up with Mr. Stork. Does that, does anyone object to that or have anything else to raise? Mr. Marston?
I just wanna make sure. So am I now released?
You are excused. Yes, thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
I do wanna apologize for the casual dress, but it's 105 degrees today in Yukaya. And I just was not gonna put on the suit, so I apologize. No disrespect intended.
I appreciate that. I'm, I'm warm in my jacket.
Everybody have a good day.
Thank you. Let's go ahead. We'll take a 10 minute break. We'll return at 10:43 and pick up with Mr. Stork. Thank you.
All right, I will look to Ms. Cott, are you ready for us to go back on the record?
All set, thanks.
Thank you. And I will turn first to Ms. Chester because I see your hand is up, please go ahead.
Kenzie, I just wanted to note that the sites authority has scope objections to Mr. Stork's testimony that we would like to make on the record before his direct.
All right, then let's, I think the time is now, so let's go ahead and start with that, thank you.
Thank you, so we have evidentiary objections to the scope of both his written testimony in FOR 10A as well as his summary presentation in FOR 28. Specifically in his written testimony, this applies to paragraphs nine, forty-five to fifty-two, sixty-one to sixty-three, seventy to eighty-one, and eighty-four to eighty-eight. Those paragraphs are inadmissible under Evidence Code Section 801 as they do not reflect an opinion limited to his own knowledge and expertise. Additionally, his summary slides thirty-seven through forty-one, as well as forty-five, and forty-six through fifty-five include the information reflected in that written testimony. Also, there are additional slides that appear to be outside the scope of his written testimony. That includes a link in Slide two, Slides twelve, thirteen, and fifteen, Bullet two in Slide sixteen, and the image on Slide twenty-nine to the extent that any of his talking points exceed the scope of his written testimony.
Noted, thank you, Ms. Chester, and as you, as the authority did with respect to the other evidentiary objections, will you please, just as you have stated them now, email them out in writing? That would be much appreciated, so we can all have those, those numbers.
Good, this, could Miss Chester just repeat the paragraphs for ten A again, please?
Please, if you would.
Paragraph nine, forty-five to fifty-two, sixty-one to sixty-three, seventy to eighty-one, and eighty-eight, excuse me, eighty-four to eighty-eight.
Thank you.
And just as a procedural matter, I will not be doing the direct if you'd like to pin Don Mooney instead of myself, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Billy, thanks for the clarification. Thank you, Ms. Chester. I think with that, we can proceed, I will ask my team if we can bring up Mr. Mooney to our pen. And welcome, Mr. Stork, it's nice to see you. I will at this time administer the oath and then turn to you, Mr. Mooney, to introduce our witness further. Mr. Stork, if you would, please raise your right hand. Mr. Stork, do you swear or affirm, under the penalty of perjury, that the testimony you will give in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much, and with that, I will turn to you, Mr. Mooney.
Good morning, Mr. Stork, could you please state your name for the record?
Ronald Martin Stork.
And do you understand you're under oath?
I certainly do.
And is Exhibit 10A an accurate statement of your written testimony?
It is.
And is Exhibit, or Exhibit Friends of the River, FOR Exhibit thirty-four, the notice of errata to your written testimony of FOR 10A, yes?
It is.
And is Exhibit FOR nine an accurate statement of your qualifications?
It is.
And is Exhibit twenty-eight an accurate summary of your testimony?
It is.
And did you prepare that summary?
I did.
And also, with respect to Exhibit FOR 10A, did you prepare that testimony?
I did.
Okay, and would you please summarize your testimony?
I'm happy to. So you may want to bring up for Exhibit twenty-eight so people can follow along in the PowerPoint. There we go. So this presentation is on the historical setting of Sites Reservoir, another north-south water export project. Next slide. And I've been around for a while and have found myself called upon to provide some historical settings in the past in Water Rights Proceedings. Next slide. This, this happens to be photos of the Sites Reservoir side area, but just included to pretty up the PowerPoint a little bit. Next slide. So the purpose of this testimony is indeed to ask or provide some setting for the AHO hearing issues and the basis of rights being sought by the Sites Project Authority. So I'm going to review the history of some history of California water, particularly export projects, and the setting of sites in that history. And I do not intend to provide any specific or information that might be useful in setting specific bypass releases, seasons of diversions, operation plans, that sort of thing. Next slide. I'd like to say that I'm going to be providing an overview on the rise and fall of comprehensive general, ultimate, and coordinated plans for the consumptive use of California's river heritage, and also the history of north-south state water export political compromises and the Sites Project's proposed escape from that history. Next slide. This is a summary of what I, conclusions of my testimony that the Sites is a large former state water project, at least as an ass, at least as something that State Water Project aspired to create someday export diversion proposed now by Western Sacramento Valley ag districts for the benefit of south of Delta State Water Project contractors, or at least largely so. The Sites Project is proposing to revive a long abandoned Water Code section now used by counties for local projects and yet escape from the area of origin and Delta Protection Act obligations of historic export projects. In the modern setting, I believe that that history would provide justification for the board to condition new export projects cautiously or even not approve them at all. And at minimum, they should carry the obligations of export facilities of yesteryear. Next slide. Yes, background and deep history, yes, next slide. The state filings were created by the California Legislature in nineteen twenty-seven in response to Bulletin Number Twelve, which was a summary report of water resources and a coordinated plan for the development, which was later echoed in additional major north-to-south export projects that were proposed in front of the state legislature. And the original purpose for those state filings was to reserve water for these projects for which the CBP and later the State Water Project would, could rely on. So the Sites Project's export purposes hearken back to the nineteen twenty-seven creation of the state filings system. Next slide. In nineteen thirty-one, the state engineer produced the first state water plan, Bulletin Twenty-Five, and it indeed featured massive north state to south state water transfers. And as part of the political compromises around authorizations of the CBP, in nineteen thirty-three, the legislature passed a county of origin law which allowed counties of origin access to an inside track for assignments of state filings and protection and assignments awarded to others. Next slide. So those CBP and state water projects were awarded more than half a century ago, that's starting to be history, not necessarily contemporary history. And the modern origins of these state filings by counties of origin looks to capitalize on the two hundred state filings and eighty-nine million acre feet annually and seventy-five thousand cubic feet feet per second potentially available for diversion in these filings. Next slide. So the Central Valley Project was made subject to the area of origin law, which I won't read here, but for which a careful reading is always a good thing. Next slide. In the, the history of this, the South State leaders such as Metropolitan Water District had fought the area of origin laws for fear that some of the yield of this state water project and CBP to serve these areas of deficiency may be lost if the surplus declined over time. Nevertheless, legislative compromise was reached. Next slide. The CBP was, of course, this was Depression era, and so the federal government stepped in and the CBP was authorized by the Congress in nineteen thirty-five. And that would usher in a wave of mega dam projects built by reclamation in the core local irrigation districts and some utilities that, you know, went on for the next forty years and joining some of the other dams that had been built on California's rivers. And preventing the wasting to the sea motivated the era, not the environmental uses of water staying in a river. It was all about prevention of that water to waste to the sea and indeed flow to farms and cities south of the Delta and, to some degree, even north of the Delta. Next slide. There was the Depression, and then there was World War Two. And after the war, it was the time in which resources could be again devoted to dam construction, and the Department of Interior produced its Magnum Opus in nineteen forty-nine dedicated to bringing the surplus waters of the north to areas of deficiency in the south and published a wonderful book on it subtitled Our Rivers: Total Use for Greater Wealth. Next slide. Interiors Plan featured about thirty million acre feet of proposed new storage, including some smaller items of interest near the proposed Sites Project. And also, of course, they built Chastadam during the World War Two. And they, they weren't finished with the Sacramento River, they actually included a five-point-six-million-acre-foot dam on the main stem of the Sacramento River downstream of Chastadam as part of their proposals for the future of the Central Valley Project. Next slide. Once again, looking from an interiors perspective, in nineteen forty-nine, they proposed constructing several reservoirs on tributaries of the Sacramento River between Chastadam and the mouth of Stony Creek, perhaps foreshadowing the nearby Sites Project. Reclamation was looking at about fourteen reservoir sites which weren't detailed in nineteen forty-nine proposal with about seven hundred thousand acre feet of storage. And of course, in the meantime, reclamation was finding ways to expand the service areas to be served by the Central Valley Project, which, of course, increased demand and putting more pressure on the supply that was being developed at the time. Next slide. California, not to be upstaged by the United States of America, proposed its own water plan in nineteen fifty-seven. We have three copies of that at the Friends River Office, in case you want to borrow one sometime. And it it is on the Water Board's website associated with state filings as an example of a general coordinated comprehensive plan. And, and I'm going to argue that perhaps it's time to take that down. Next slide. The nineteen fifty-seven California Water Plant Bulletin Three was absolutely breathtaking in scale. And it, it was unapologetic about that. It claimed to be a comprehensive, coordinated, general, ultimate, and complete master plan for local, regional, inter-basin developments and transfers of the state water, echoing the words of the nineteen thirty-one conditions for disposition of state filings. Next slide. The Delta alone was envisioned to transport eighteen million acre feet of north state water to the areas of deficiency further south. And some wags called it also the final solution for the state's rivers. And after the fifty-seven plan and, and even later, new waves of state filings ensued, which I argue are ghosts of projects that haunt the state's rivers. Next slide. If you can't read the Magnum Opus itself, I would ask you to turn to the last page, the very last page of Bulletin Three, and it shows the general picture of exports from the north state to the south state with numbers on how much would be delivered in general to these various areas in the plan. Next slide. So the Sites Project actually made it into Bulletin Three. And it was included in West Side Streams Group section. And the Sites Project's purposes were not exactly grand. It was proposed for recreation and possibly for a little local flood control. And and like, like it's the Sites Project proposal now, it was thought that it could provide some terminal storage for the Tampa Colusa Canal, but that that terminal storage would serve the contiguous lands. Bulletin Three did not propose the Sites Project as a and we're still going to peek back through the mists of time. Next slide. So the modern State Water Project, I would argue, emerged from Bulletin Three. And the State Water Project also emerged with obligations, not necessarily supported by South State interests, but that's the way it, it went. And the Delta Protection Act reaffirmed that the State Water Project was subject to area of origin and county of origin statutes and made the CBP and State Water Project responsible for salinity control and uses in the Delta. But pushed by a popular governor, Mr. Brown, Mr. Pat Brown, and the fact that there was freedom from the threat of acreage ownership restrictions that had irritated farmers in the San Joaquin Valley and subsidized by offshore oil revenues, the State Water Project met its early authorization and funding challenges. Next slide. And those were confident years, four-point-two-million acre feet of contracts were signed, assumed to be coming from a Feather River and Delta supply, at least initially. And at the time, they thought that the, about two-point-three-million acre feet could be squeezed out of the Delta, which is not eighteen million acre feet, I would suggest. And there, after all, the, the reason for those contracts exceeding the supply was pretty obvious, and that the California Water Plant had promised that the state has enough water to satisfy the water needs of the state. And doing so was just a financial and engineer problem. Yes, engineer problem, not engineering, don't ask me why they use that term, that word. Since the California Water Plant was capable of squeezing out eighteen million acre feet across the Delta to the south. Next slide. And so while the demands of the State Water Project and CBP built up, DWR and the State Water Project contractors led by Metropolitan focused their next sites on the E River. And that was a, they had that plan, it was a successive construction of dams and reservoirs that would effectively convert the Eel River canyons into reservoirs, and there wouldn't be really much left of rivers at all. And then a tunnel or tunnels would be, would deliver water through the coast range and into the Glen Reservoir complex just north of Sites, and it will appear in this tail more in the future. So the Eel was expected to supply almost a million acre feet and then up to two-point-three-million acre feet of water. Next slide. And the, the proposals were breathtaking in their scope, as I suggested earlier. And the California Committee of Two Million, which actually decided to oppose these projects, produced a lovely map showing the, the nature of the conversion of the North Coast Rivers into reservoirs. Next slide. Of the interest to where we will be with the Sites Project, Metropolitan considered owning the project, that is, the Eel Project, with the idea of being free from those pesky area of origin provisions of the Water Code that applied to State Water Project and the CBP, essentially the big export projects. DWR won the battle. He's Metropolitan aside. there, after all, the the reason for those contracts exceeding the supply was pretty obvious. And then the California Water Plan had promised that the state has enough water to satisfy the water needs of the state. And doing so was just a financial and engineer problem. Yes, engineer problem, not engineering. Don't ask me why they use that term, that word. Since the California Water Plan was capable of squeezing out eighteen million acre feet across the Delta to the South. Next slide. And so while the demands of the state water project and CDP built up, DWR and the state water project contractors led by Metropolitan focused their next sites on the E River. And that was a, they had that plan. It was a successive construction of dams and reservoirs that would effectively convert the Eel River Canyons into reservoirs, and there wouldn't be really much left of rivers at all. And then a tunnel or tunnels would be would deliver water through the coast range and into the Glen Reservoir Complex just north of Sites, and it will appear in this tail more in the future. So the Eel was expected to supply almost a million acre feet and then up to two point three million acre feet of water. Next slide. And the the proposals were breathtaking in their scope, as I suggested earlier. And the California Committee of Two Million, which actually decided to oppose these projects, produced a lovely map showing the the nature of the conversion of the North Coast Rivers into reservoirs. Next slide. Of the interest to where we will be with the sites project, Metropolitan considered owning the project that is the Eel Project with the idea of being free from those pesky area of origin provisions of the Water Code that applied to state water project and the CDP, essentially the big export projects. DWR won the battle. He's Metropolitan aside, and the expansion of the state water project would fall to the state of California led by the Department of Water Resources, which was well-staffed at that time. Next slide. But there was a backlash. As I, as I noted earlier, the the Eel River projects were controversial. And the conversion of the North Coast Rivers was controversial. And State Senator Peter Bear, Republican Marin, decided to author legislation, created a California Wild and Seated Rivers Act. The federal act had been passed in nineteen sixty eight. And it involved the the North Coast Rivers. It also involved the Lower American River and a portion of the North Fork River, American River. And Governor Reagan signed the bill. So we had just created a California Wild and Seated Rivers Act right in the place where the California Water Plan was proposing to get roughly eleven million acre feet of surplus water to export to the areas of deficiencies to the South. Next slide. There he is. Signing the bill with a flourish. Apparently, he put on quite a show to the assembled people there. Next slide. However, we would not be, these controversies would not end. Next slide. So what was DWR proposing to do now that the North Coast Rivers were off limits, at least for a time? And so they proposed to repurpose the Glen Reservoir Complex to store eight point five million acre feet of water pumped from the Sacramento River and you know, some various contributions from tributaries. Next slide. So post nineteen seventy two, DWR was doing other things. It was made state filings for Glen Reservoir. State filings for Los Badas Grande, a big parallel project south of San Luis Reservoir and a filing for the Colusa Reservoir. The latter, of course, is what the sites project is seeking partial authority from that assignment. Next slide. In nineteen eighty, Pat Brown's son Jerry, young Pat Jerry Brown, proposed a package of water projects to be placed in front of the voters, including the Purfo Canal, authorization of the Glen Reservoir Unit, or if infeasible, the Colusa Reservoir Unit. Or if that was infeasible, a Corps of Engineers Finance Sites Reservoir Division Project. The latter's purposes would be to serve the Tahaemocloosa Canal and any extension into Yolo and Somano Counties. Once again, not an export project. At least across the Delta. Next slide. Including in that proposal was also authorization, kind of an authorization, for the Mid Valley Canal, which proposed to take water from San Luis, sorry, the Delta Mendota Pool coming out of the San Luis Delta Mendota Canal, Federal Canal heading from the Delta and taking that to serve the northern part of the Flyant Unit of the CDP. In Governor Brown's proposal, there was a reaffirmation of the area of origin doctrine for these projects. Next slide. Brown's package failed by a narrow vote. And interestingly enough, Jerry Brown, who sought, who made the a simultaneous televised appearance as he signed SB two hundred, the Purfo Canal language also, on that same day, requested that the state's Wild and Seated River system that existed at the time be added to the National Wild and Seated River System. That proposal proved controversial. State water contractors CDP contractors and the usual gang of suspects were strongly opposed to that. There was a whole series of litigation and injunctions and back and forth in the federal courts, both before and after the Secretary Anderson's ultimate acceptance of Governor Brown's proposal. Litigation continued until nineteen eighty five, but in the end, the North Coast Rivers were now in both Wild and Seated Rivers and that political package to export more water south had failed. Next slide. All right, now we're getting into the modern era. Cal Fed, lovely. Next slide. So the Cal Fed Record of Decision in two thousand eighteen years after the sites project's third class authorization had failed in that statewide ballot. Cal Fed recommended further investigation in a motley collection of storage project proposals. There were five of them. Sites was in the second tier, requiring more technical, environmental, and cost-sharing work before sites could be recommended for a project-specific study. That's what's in the Cal Fed Record of Decision. Next slide. And the broad assumed that the studies would be pursued with state and federal funding. Consistent, I believe, with the kindness of strangers on which the sites project had relied for the previous half century. Next slide. It's important to to recognize the Cal Fed did not promise support for constructing those storage projects. Indeed, at least in in the judgment, perhaps the naive judgment of Friends of the River, they appeared to be doomed since the Record of Decision said they were to be implemented on the beneficiaries' pay principle. And most of them failing that test for decades. Next slide. For thirteen years, after the raw, DWR carried that burden of doing the sites investigation with the concept, at least initially, that it would be a state water project facility. Indeed, Cal Fed projects, however, haven't really done well. Reclamations to Cal Fed projects have fallen away. That's the storage projects. The in-Delta storage project, I don't think really ever got going. So that's three of the five. And this last week, it appears that the fourth project, the Los Ficaros project, is on the verge of being mothballed. So Sites appears to be the last one standing. And I will note that Cal Fed never promised them deference, the deference that they've received subsequently. Next slide. I I argue that the sites project got its big lift from the availability of billions in state and federal taxpayer grants and loans. And its continual viability, of course, may rest on that and also the nature of decisions made in this hearing. And at least in the judgment of of many sites, viability may also rest on the Delta Transfer Arrangements. Next slide. So perhaps it's an irreverent slide here. We'll go on. I don't want to be irreverent. Well, I'll continue to be a reverent. So lining the pork barrel. The the aspiring Cal Fed story backers stayed focused and got in the California Water Bond in two thousand. Was going to go to the voters in two thousand ten. In two thousand nine, got the legislature to include this three billion dollars of taxpayer dollars to fund public benefits of the projects, which at the time, of course, we didn't know what the what the public benefits were or how much they would be worth, but three billion was what the Water Bond said it was worth, or or at least that's the amount of money that they would would put up. Next slide. It got pruned down to two point seven. And it got delayed and finally it was passed in twenty fourteen. But the state and federal governments weren't actually eligible for the bond awards. So it put these projects that had been previously thought to be state or federal projects to be on the back foot, at least for a while. So state and federal actors, non-state and non-federal actors, became essential for these projects. And DWR's hoped-for project partner, which would would actually become its successor, and that's the Site Project Authority. My good friends there. Next slide. Of course, not to be outdone, there was the federal side. The water infrastructure improvements for the Nation Act of twenty sixteen was passed to help revive reclamation's dam building program. And it also made non-federal projects like Sites eligible for grants for the federal benefits of up to twenty five percent of project costs. And at the same time, Congress was making circumstances available that federal agencies, whether it's reclamation or EPA, could offer loans to these non-federal projects. Next slide. So the sites project, after seventy five years of federal and state subsidies and planning, engineering, and environmental view, has survived, I argue, by the accidents of fate. Part of that is the presence of this century-old Water Code language long after the purpose for it had run its course. Remembering that its purpose had been to reserve dam sites for the state and federal water projects to take water that was surplus from the north and bring it to the areas of deficiency in the South. Next slide. And of course, we're in California, so we know about surfing. Surfing the subsidies. Sites is the beneficiary of of these projects that many of us believe are really to get around the beneficiary's base principle. But I don't make that argument here. Incentivizing the JPAs, the project authority is indeed the beneficiary of these funding arrangements or funding possibilities which fostered the creation of the authority and its eligibility for these funds. Next slide. This was also the confluence of South State water projects hoping to escape the obligations that come from the CDP and the state water project. And it's also the confluence of of sites project authorities formation and its interest in constructing a profitable export project that would be under their control and ownership. I also note that the benefits are meager in comparison to the two million or so acre feet of project water. It's hoped for, well, can be delivered by the state water project and maybe four to six million acre feet of Delta transfer water depending on the years. And also, to it's the one accident fate, fate, of course, is to arguably three Governor Browns championing these ideas. Next slide. So based on on the history of these north-south export projects and the questions that had been asked by the AHO, I could make a number of recommendations. Next slide. The theme of this is that if it walks like a and quacks like a duck, it should be treated like a duck. By the way, I like ducks. This is a north-to-south state export project. And these projects should be rooted in the modern understandings of what a Norse, what kind of surplus is actually in the North State. The standards for these projects in the past have included some responsibilities such as the area of origin and county of origin and Delta Protection Act obligations. But also the boards treatment of these projects necessarily includes the public trust and the public interest. And not just the statutory words that were created in nineteen twenty seven, a hundred years ago. We know more today. And we may know that appropriate conditions that resulted in the conclusion that water rights should not be issue is a possibility. Next slide. The Water Code descriptions of the standards for assignments and state filings were intended by its framers to be consistent with the breathtakingly ambitious and river-destroying, river-and-stream-destroying water plants conceived of in the first half of the twentieth century. And these these plans dashed on the rocks of modernity. Nearly a half a century ago, and it's time to recognize that. Excellent. Remnants of these plans still exist and call for increased storage projects, increased canal infrastructure to deliver these surplus waters to the areas of deficiency. Um, along with general generous state and federal subsidies to accomplish this goal. Uh, although these supply expansions are small in comparison to yesteryear. The theme is the same. The resources to be tapped are now, of course, less available and the remaining natural resources more vulnerable because of the implementation of these plans in the last century. And something uh clearly needs to change and the Water Board can and should be a change agent. Next slide. Among the questions that the AHO posed in this hearing is whether the sites project should bear responsibilities of the export projects of the mid twentieth century. Uh, of course, that's a judgment call for the board to make and for the AHO to make a recommendation. But my answer would be yes. I also argue that the proposed place of use is is breathtakingly large. But although the project partners are also large. They are not um the whole place of use. And I think it's the board needs to consider fundamentally whether this is really a project for a distinct group of state water project customers. And that uh the place of use is unrealistically large in relation to the expectations of supply from the project. I also argue that this generation of state water project contractors, I know some of them and they're nice people. And they need to accept the no bless oblige responsibilities to the North State, its people and the resources of its watershed that were accepted by previous generations of state water project contractors. Next slide. Here's, I think we're all familiar with the proposed place of use. The board should also look to its own practices. For example, independent project transfers are treated with a kinder hand than than are the projects. But this will be an export project, the first major dam project, storage project in the North State in in well, since well into a half a century ago. So this is not just a the sites project is not just proposing incidental transfers of surplus water. Next slide. The project indeed has the feel of a much earlier era of California water development. And its antiquity should be recognized as out of stepped with today's public trust and public interest needs. And so the board should not fear um making decisions on that basis that extend beyond the words of the nineteen twenty seven statute um about assignments. Next slide. And you'll be happy to know that I have finished. And I I guess I'm, you know, headed for some tough cross-examination by Mr. Ferguson. And apparently others.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. I believe with that, we are ready indeed, as you forecasted, to move on to cross-examination and I will turn. It looks like to Mr. Hitchens, your at least, or Ms. Chester, maybe your your mute is off. So Ms. Chester, are you going to be cross-examining Mr. Store?
Yes, it will be me.
Please, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Stork. My name is Michelle Chester. I represent the Sites Project Authority in this proceeding. I do appreciate you being available for questions. To begin, are you familiar with the testimony of Ms. Forsyth on the authority's panel two? Addressing the authority's consideration of statewide strategic plans for water resources?
Yes, I am.
And Ms. Forsyth identified predecessors to the proposed sites project described in those plans. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the twenty twenty California Water Resilience Portfolio document?
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Mullin, can you please bring up F O R eighty six? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Stork, is it correct that this is the twenty twenty California Water Resilience Portfolio document?
It is.
And Ms. Mullin, could you please go to PDF page three? Oh, I apologize that they're duplicated. Yes, that's correct. Uh, Mr. Stork, is it correct that this document is endorsed by agencies of the state of California, including the State Water Resources Control Board?
That's what it says.
Uh, Ms. Mullin, I'd like to go to PDF page twenty. Great. And I'm looking on page twenty. Do you see section seven point one on that page?
I do.
Uh, do we need to zoom in at all?
No, I'm quite familiar with that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, does it identify sites as a project that protects and enhances fish and wildlife and water supply reliability?
It, yes, it does.
And is this information relevant to the historical context provided in your written testimony?
It is relevant to the present day context.
Are you familiar with the two thousand twenty two California Water Supply Strategy Document?
I am.
Ms. Mullin, can you please go to F O R eighty seven? Mr. Stork, is it correct that this is the twenty twenty two California Water Supply Strategy Document?
Yes, I'm familiar with it.
Can we please go to PDF page three? In the second paragraph. There's a sentence beginning with to ensure California has the water needed for generations to come.
Correct.
And do you see another bullet stating create storage space? I think we do need to scroll down.
There is that bullet.
And do you see the fourth bullet? With the language capturing stormwater?
Uh, yes.
And is this information relevant to the historical context provided in your written testimony?
So I will offer that stormwater in the water world is generally referring to urban runoff. Um, but stormwater, the term stormwater is ambiguously used. Um, you can sometimes refer to water and rivers. It's more often used for capturing um one of those rolling off hard surfaces in urban areas.
Based on the language we've reviewed, do you agree that this document would be relevant to the historical context of the sites reservoir?
Well, as I said earlier, I think it represents the perspectives of Governor Newsom and the folks who prepared this, which is largely in the Department of Water Resources.
And you didn't analyze this document in your written testimony, did you?
I made reference to it. But I did not analyze it.
And the twenty twenty California Water Resilience Portfolio document that we looked at, you didn't analyze that in your written testimony, did you?
Yeah, the same answer as I just gave.
Can we please bring up sites exhibit ninety? Mr. Stark, are you familiar with the twenty twenty three California Water Plan Update?
Yes. It's a great read.
I apologize. I can you repeat that?
It's a great read.
Ms. Mullin, can we please go to PDF page one fifty three at the bottom? And Mr. Stork, do you see under the heading Water Supply Strategy numbers one and two?
Yes, I do.
And can we please scroll to the top of the next page? Do you see the third bullet?
I uh do see that. The third bullet is increased stormwater capture. Point two five million acre feet. Once again, if you look at the at the figure depicting it above, you'll see that increased stormwater capture is around cities, urbanized areas. And here stormwater capture is representing urban runoff.
Hearing Officer, I would move to strike that response as non-responsive.
Go ahead, Mr. Many.
I was gonna say, I thought it was quite responsive and it and it qualified as it built upon an answer he'd given previously when she asked about stormwater capture.
Overruled. Go ahead, Ms. Chester.
Let me please go to PDF page one fifty five. Do you see the third bullet expanding storage above and below ground by advancing Proposition One's storage projects?
I certainly do.
Is it correct that Sites Reservoir is a project funded under Proposition One?
Yes, it 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 is. At least it's received early funding and it has aspirations of receiving actual construction funding from the Water Supply Investment Program created by under Proposition One.
And is the information we've reviewed in the twenty twenty three Water Plant Update relevant to the historical context provided in your written testimony?
It is. But it's also, you might have noticed that you uh missed the uh actual part of the governor's program about increasing storage by four million acre feet with the important asterisk that storage does not equal water. Right there in the water plan.
This twenty twenty three Water Plan Update, either the sections we've reviewed or the section you described, is not included in your written testimony, is it?
Uh, only briefly.
Where is it identified in your testimony?
Oh. You'd have to do a search, but I'm referring to the successors of of Bolton Three, the successor of Water Plans. So it's in one paragraph in my testimony.
But you did not include a detailed review of the twenty 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 three Water Plan Update as part of your historical analysis, did you?
No, I I well, question is what is detailed? Um, it is mentioned. Whether or not it is detailed, I guess, is in the eye of the beholder.
Can we please bring up your testimony, which is F O R ten A?
There, you're gonna get it.
And can we please go to PDF page twenty eight? Beginning with paragraph fifty three through paragraph fifty six. You express opinions about the need for sites to have obligations similar to SWP for what you refer to as Delta environmental purposes. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
What's the basis of your opinion?
They have, uh, these export projects have historically been asked to bear certain burdens. And given the challenges that the state is facing in the Delta. Those burdens are not unreasonable. And the board has the discretion to impose those burdens on new projects that it is um giving water rights to.
Did you conduct any water quality analysis for purposes of your testimony?
I did not.
Do you cite to any water quality analysis in your testimony?
I don't think so.
Did you review any water quality analyses for purposes of your testimony?
Well, it's I'm swimming in in that whole sea of analyses, but uh so I but I can't say that I uh pulled down uh this report or not. As I said in my testimony, uh, this is a testimony not um proposing specific recommendations for conditions on diversions in order to maintain fisheries or water quality or um those kinds of things. This is just um historical background uh that can inform the board in in confronting its responsibilities to review and make decisions about this water rates application.
So it is not your opinion in this written testimony that any permit issued to sites must have an obligation similar to SWP for Delta environmental purposes?
That's my opinion.
It, can you please explain how that is your opinion, but you are not offering any conditions on diversions?
But I'm not the only uh witness testifying for Friends of the River and for others. And the I was assigned this task to uh review the history in the setting of this project. And not to And not to be offering testimony about specific conditions on diversions. Other than I do offer that this is an export project. That is seeking to export surplus water to the areas of deficiency. Um, as its predecessors did, and that the board has the tough responsibility. Of figuring out what's, what is excess, what is surplus?
But it is not your intention that your testimony should serve as the basis for a decision by the State Water Board to impose obligations for Delta environmental purposes on site's authority?
I think it sets the background uh for doing so, but it doesn't offer specific recommendations. On, for example, what the bypass requirement should be at the. Um, you know, Red Bluff Diversion Dam or the, you know, various points downstream.
Ms. Mullin, can we please go to PDF page thirty? Now, this is the end of paragraph twenty-six. And you say that, quote, "Projects tapping surplus North State River flows should have the same obligations of the C V P and S W P projects." Do you see that?
I don't see that, but uh I did write that.
Wait, I think we need to relocate here somehow.
Um, I'm looking at line five.
What page?
Uh, on this page.
That it, that is not, line five is not what you said, at least what we're looking at.
That's right.
Said, "Projects tapping surplus North State River flows to have the same."
There it is, okay.
And S W P projects. I, I apologize. I, I used your definition of projects from page twenty-eight. You understand that, correct?
I'm perfectly happy with that, yeah.
When you say that sites should have the same obligations, do you mean that sites should support existing obligations of S W P and C V P to supply Delta flows?
Yes. Support, share in the responsibility. It certainly doesn't, it's not big enough to, to. Bear all the responsibility.
So to be clear, you're not suggesting that sites be responsible for providing the same amount of water to the Delta in addition to the requirements imposed on C V P and S W P, is that correct?
I'm suggesting that it should share in the responsibility to help meet Delta. Conditions as well as, as assume the burden of being subject to area of origin and county of origin law. Assuming it's even, assuming that, we're assuming here that, that the board wants to authorize. Or give water rights to the project.
Did you review information regarding the proposed terms for the operation of Site's Reservoir?
I did.
Would Operation of Site's Reservoir interfere with existing S W P obligations to make releases for Delta environmental purposes?
I uh am not going to opine on that.
Is it correct to assume that your answer is, I don't know?
No.
Can you please clarify why you are not answering the question?
Could you answer, ask the question again?
Would Operation of Site's Reservoir interfere with existing state water project obligations to make releases for Delta environmental purposes?
I guess there are circumstances where it very well may. Um, whether or not. Those are circumstances where it may, if you are adding. A big new export project, storage project. Um, based on the history of these projects. And the circumstances that we find ourselves now in in the state. It seems quite reasonable for the board to impose those shared obligations. Um, with the projects.
So your response is not based on any information of the proposed terms for operations of the site's reservoir, is that correct?
Well, I have peeked at uh the testimony of other Friends of the River witnesses quite considerably. And so I do have an opinion that, that there needs to be conditions. And that those conditions that are proposed by the site's authority are insufficiently protective to. Uh, those resources, but that's was not the purpose of my testimony. Only just noting that. The historic setting of this export project to expo quote surplus water to quote areas of deficiency. And the obligations that have been imposed on such projects in the past. And the discretion that the board has to. Um, impose some share of those obligations. On the project that is here today, that we are talking about today.
I believe you.
And thank you for allowing me to revise and extend my remarks. I appreciate it.
Of course. Um, I believe you stated that you had, to some extent, reviewed the proposed terms for operations for sites, but that they were insufficient. Is that a correct statement of your testimony?
That is a conclusion of other experts. But that is not a conclusion that was in my testimony.
What other experts are you referring to?
Um, I have been in discussions with Jonathan Rosenfield and Tina Swanson. And Chris Schutz and no doubt others um who have. Been working in this area of fisheries in the Delta and fisheries in the Sacramento River. Um, and, and Friends River is not exactly a stranger to this watershed either.
Can we please scroll down on this page to line fifteen, please? Do you see the line beginning with, however, there is no indication that?
Yes.
Is it your opinion in the, this paragraph that the site's project could detract from water available to counties of origin?
Um, the answer is, is yes. It's a, it's, um, yes, it could. I, I don't say it would. And what I'm suggesting is that um if an assignment is made by the board. That uh the traditional way, at least for as long as the board has been doing this, has been to um, um, have conditions that uh subject. The assignment to potentially um. Superior rights or some other mechanism that might be developed by counties, by the counties of origin. Um, for water needed in their development. It's a modest request. It's a request that the board has imposed on the other exports projects without. A lot of harm to those projects, so I. I have that opinion that history here should. Make it so that the board should not fear to step in such a modest rest.
You aware that Sites is designed to divert during excess conditions?
I am, that is, I have been in many meetings with my friends, I, I count them as friends. With the site's authority, and I believe that that is their opinion.
And is it your understanding that Sites has made arrangements to subjugate its rights to other waterright users?
Yes, some waterright users. We've gone into that in considerable detail in meetings with the authority.
Would those two terms address your concerns stated in this paragraph?
Not fully.
Can you please expand on that answer?
For, for one thing, the subordination that the site's project is proposing is for. Folks who've acquired water rights since nineteen seventy-seven up to the time in which. The authority uh filed for the application. So um, the potential incoate. Um, needs of the counties of origin. And the watersheds within the county. Do not necessarily include all of folks who have existing rights. And in fact, the standard conditions that are imposed on. Uh, that, that exist in assignments. Make um a, essentially a general. A conclusion that someday. If a county has um a need for. Um, a water right or other future arrangements. That the assignment might be vulnerable to a. Uh, water right that might be issued that's senior to it, even though it's developed. Earlier.
Would your concern be addressed in a term of that future unknown assignment of a water right?
Um, that concern would be addressed if there was a standard provision. Allowing essentially a re opener, there's more than one way to characterize this. For counties of origin. Yes, that, that, that concern, there are other concerns, but that concern would be addressed.
Can we please?
It's not the same thing, of course, as area of origin stuff, but. County of origin and area of origin are similar, but not quite the same.
Can we please go to PDF page thirty-four? You please scroll down to paragraph sixty-eight? Thank you. And here, Mister Stark, you state that the authority's petitions for release of priority address water availability based on estimates of sufficient water available for Glen, Tahama, and Shasta Counties, correct?
That is correct, that the authority has decided to estimate. Has, has done that analysis and made that estimate, estimation, estimation. That is not the same, however, as a general reservation of. Potential. Future water rights that might be issued that are um would be senior to. The site's application. It's not quite the same.
So do you disagree with the authority's analysis that there is sufficient water supply for the county's development?
I agree that this, that the, that they made that analysis. Whether or not that analysis um is the kind of analysis that in the future. Uh, would be helpful to counties of origin is. Is, is still an open question. But as you, as you noted before. General terms uh about counties of origin. Um, would. Fix that particular problem.
Did you perform any water availability analysis?
Um, I did not.
Do you have any experience performing water availability analyses?
I have been the subject of um. Quite a few water availability analysis sees, but I have not, I've not been the one who's had to make them.
Can you please explain what you mean by the subject of water availability analyses?
Uh, this project and um is not the only project that makes water availability analyses in support of their. Applications.
Maybe I can ask Mister Stark, when you say you've been the subject, the subject of waterability analyses, availability analyses, you mean you had to read them? Is that, I mean, generally? Okay.
Are you aware of any current state filed applications for water needed for development of any of the counties of origin at issue?
Uh, well, there's obviously a remaining state file. Uh, this is only a partial assignment of, of that particular application, and in this particular. Uh, um, or at least a portion of this watershed. You've identified um a number of applications for which you are, the, the authority is seeking releases from priority, so obviously there are. Potential um assignments that could be made. And, and the authority is seeking a release and priority from them, uh, which in effect would say that. Uh, you know, if a county of origin wants to um use those filings, it ain't gonna work. Um, to establish a right that would be uh superior to the authority.
Were you aware of the memorandums of understanding that the site's authority has entered into with uh Glen County? And proposed for other counties?
Yes.
We please go to PDF page thirty-five. I apologize, I have the page wrong. Can we please go to paragraph seventy-eight? Thank you. So, beginning with this paragraph, you include opinions that Site's Reservoir will increase the cost of water generally, is that correct?
Um, yeah, that's what I state.
What's your basis of that opinion?
Well, it's stated there in the paragraph.
Can you please point to the line you're referring to?
Uh, well, uh, you'd have to scroll down some, some more. So that paragraph is, is. Um, my thoughts on it. I recognize that um. Uh, there may be debate uh among economists on. What the introduction of high-priced water might be into a market. And there are, there's a room for varying opinions on that, and I express. One of those opinions.
Is there any further documentation submitted with your testimony that supports this paragraph?
I don't think that I, um, I have lots of exhibits, but I don't think I had an exhibit on. This particular economic assessment.
So how did you form the basis of the opinion in this paragraph?
Well, I did take macroeconomics in college. And I've been around, um, so. Experience in the water world.
Economic analysis specific to Sites.
I'm sorry, I missed the beginning of your question.
And I asked if he performed any economic analysis. And I asked if he performed any economic analysis specific to these opinions.
I did not.
Is the college course you took the only experience you have in analysis of water market pricing?
Uh, as I said, I've been around, I'm seventy-one years old and I've been in water for fifty years, so um, I have some experience beyond taking macroeconomics.
Can you identify a specific project or analysis relevant to market pricing?
Uh, I mean, these these issues were were involved in, of course, the um, uh, twin tunnels um, controversies. Um, they're involved in the tunnel controversy. Um, there were involved in um, issues around um, the introduction of Auburn Dam water into the market uh, in many places, including as far down as sweetening the the uh, Salt and Sea uh, use offered by State Senator Ruben Ayala, who was instrumental in in the S P two hundred uh, debate um, all those years ago, nineteen eighty.
Did you perform any economic analysis in support of your participation on any of the projects you identified?
Um, no, I I did not develop a formal economics analysis. I mean, Dr. Michaels has um, for a number of projects.
In your opinion, would a declining water supply in the state have an impact on water prices?
It could.
If the sites project is not built, is it feasible that water prices could increase?
They could increase. Yes, they could. They could increase regardless.
I have a, just a few more questions. Um, the errata for your written testimony, F O R thirty-four, um, that was submitted on September twenty-sixth, correct?
I think that was the date, yeah.
Uh, what prompted you to correct your testimony?
I've told this story before, but I had um, I still have an English major from high school, sorry, English teacher from high school who um, who sometimes reviews my work and I um, so when I uh, insufficiently proofread a document, I um, I like to make it so that my English teacher would be proud.
So is it correct that none of those changes were intended to be substantive changes to your testimony?
I don't think so.
To clarify, you don't think that they were substantive? Is that correct?
No. And there's still a few typos.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chester. Um.
And thank you. I appreciated the opportunity to talk about this.
Thank you, Mr. Stork. Just as we will take our lunch break, but let, just as a check, uh, let me look to the room. Um, I'll start with D W R. Mr. Soderland, do you have any questions for Mr. Stork?
No, I'll have no questions. Thank you.
And um, I'm looking to see who we have on the line here.
I'm here. This is Ms. Offenberg.
Ms. Offenberg, thank you. You're here. Um, do you have any questions for Mr. Stork?
I do not. Thank you.
Great. And Ms. Mandel-Race, do you have any questions for Mr. Stork?
I do.
Okay, so I think where what where we will be is we, Mr. Stork, we will uh, require your presence after the lunch break, if you would please. And um, I would propose that we go ahead and do a full hour for lunch. We'll break and come back at one fifteen unless I will look, give a last call on any procedural issues we should address first.
Uh, just real quick, uh, just for the rest of the day, we're looking at, do we sort of have after uh, after Mr. Stork, um, what do we think we're getting, who are we getting to today?
Miss, well, we have Mr. Schutz after Mr. Stork, I believe.
Okay.
That is, that is correct.
Okay. So, thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, and I will see all of you. You will need to log back into the Zoom, and I will see you at one fifteen. Thank you.